Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is August 14th. Are we in compliance with open meeting law?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Women.
Here?
Carolyn.
Here.
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 Smiltnik.
Here.
Right?
Here.
We have a forum.
And if you would now all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great holy religion stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Davis, the Land Acknowledgement.
Thank you. As we gather today, we'd like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the whole Chunk Nation in Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin. We lived along the western shores of Lake Onebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you very much. And now we have approval of agenda. Is there anyone that would like to change the?
No, go ahead.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion.
Any discussions about this would be the time.
Okay, thank you. That's good viewpoint order. I remember.
Yeah.
So we normally do exceptions by acclamation. Would you like to call the roll?
Is there anything to be pulled?
Yes, I'd like to call the.
Oh, sorry.
Celia. On the consent agenda.
Yep.
Number two.
Two.
Yes.
On the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Okay, there has been a.
Point of order. Since we're doing something, we need to do a roll.
Yeah.
Yep.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Did it? Aye. Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Smiltnik.
Aye.
Gray.
Aye.
Arden.
Aye.
Smiltnik.
Thank you very much. Board Presidents' Report. I'd like to first of all, welcome our new board member, Molly Smiltnik. We had an interview process that there were four candidates, and Molly gave some superb answers and has had quite a bit of experience with the district, past 15 years.
Yeah, I guess about, yes.
And currently has children in Emmeline Cook and North High School.
Tipler now.
Oh, Tipler.
He just graduated.
Okay. All right, so we welcome Molly to the board. We welcome her expertise and certainly her history in education and the Education Committee and being on the committee that chose the new curriculum. So thank you, Molly, for all of your past work, and we look forward to working with you until April.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And welcome back to the staff. It's an exciting time when we get to start a new school year and get to have a fresh start with everything that is involved. I see some staff members here tonight and certainly our administration that has done so much work over the summer and guided the staff through all of the summer programs. One of the board members made a comment, they came in to visit or drop something off, and there were so many staff members here. So the staff does not get off for the whole summer. They've been working diligently to make sure that everyone is ready for the fall season. So thank you very, very much. And along with that, we have a board member's school assignment, and I'd like you to choose three, please. And this gives a way for our teachers to meet with a school board member throughout the year, and we look at the positive things that are happening, the things that they would like to see changed, and we combine all this information and give it to Dr. Davis so he can see a snapshot of what's happening at all of the schools. So if you would sign up for three schools, we will get all of that information back out to board members of which schools they are responsible for communicating with.
Excuse me, do we all have a copy of that?
No, we're gonna pass it around.
Okay, thank you.
Because otherwise, people may choose the same school.
And ideally, we should pick schools that we are not familiar with, correct?
That would be great.
That you haven't been in before, things like that.
All right.
And lastly, we have the retirement recognition list. We have two retirees. First one is Wendy Day, Instructional Teacher Assistant at Ready for Learning, and she's been with the district since 2008. And Diane Duval Bonard, Kindergarten 4K Teacher at Oakwood Elementary School, and she's been with the district since 1987. Dr. Herzog?
Thank you, Mrs. White. I just want to wish these two individuals the very best of the long, healthy and happy retirement. They've devoted many years to the success of our students and our district, and I think they need to be commended for that. I personally, in a previous life as District Central Office Administrator, been in the classroom of Diane and like our teachers throughout the district. They are there for the kids, and Diane is certainly an exemplary model of that. So all the best wishes to Wendy and Diane, and also an extension of an offer to come back and sub. Wendy'd like to do that.
After 75 days.
Yes, after 75 days. We'd love to have you back and continue to share your love of learning and love of students in our district. Thank you.
And the final item on my President's Report is a little shout-out for the Mission Keeper podcast that Dr. Davis has been doing since December of '23. This most recent Mission Keepers was Alicia Elsberg, and she is an art teacher at Vell Phillips and has just a tremendous story and connection with Arts Core, which is really giving her some insight as to what she can do with the kids to really make a difference in their art experience. And we're on episode 13 now, so I urge you all to listen to the podcast. It's Mission Keepers, and it's on several different.
Wherever you get your podcasts.
Exactly. So thank you, Dr. Davis, for doing that, and it's really been fun listening to all the different teachers that give so much every day. Superintendent's Report.
All right. Well, it's been a busy summer, as you'd mentioned. Staff doesn't take off, and neither do our students. So learning has not stopped this summer. The district offered many unique summer school courses designed to keep students thinking and exploring throughout the summer months. So just a few highlights shown on the screen there. Third through fifth graders got a taste of world cultures through Cooking Around the World course at Carl Treger Elementary. Students learned about language, customs, and how to prepare and eat foods from other countries. So some great examples there. So thank you to all of the staff that participated there. Students at our Oaklon Elementary site made paracord bracelets, which are part of the outdoor survivor course. They used knot tying, fine motor skills to create the all-in-one survival tool. Then through engaging group activities, they developed survival and life skills in the areas of leadership, camping, biking, bike repair, knot tying, forecasting weather, purifying water, making food, and so much more. So if you're looking for some survival skills, you can check out some of the kids at Oaklon because they'll be able to save your life in whatever situation you're in.
Excellent.
So our middle school students participating in our summer school programming at Vell Phillips use mathematical reasoning to create innovative summer garden plans. Then in our build and design course, students strengthen their technical skills from designing custom vinyl stickers to fabricating 3D-printed objects and woodworking and metalworking projects, where students gain practical experience in a wide range of design software, manufacturing tools, and engineering principles. Great experience there. And our talented Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West High School Summer School Band marched for the Oshkosh Fourth of July Parade, filling the streets with patriotic music. So I had a chance to witness that in person, and it was a great opportunity. Kids did a great job. Incredibly proud of these student musicians representing our district and celebrating our nation's birthday with the rest of the community. So thank you all for that work on a holiday. Of course, our teachers and staff have stayed busy also, as was mentioned earlier, continued to make a positive impact. Oshkosh West art teachers took time out of their summer to visit Camp 1078, which provides injured Wisconsin police officers and their families an opportunity to take a break from the stresses of their everyday lives and join together with families who are in similar situations. It's awesome to see the impact our staff can make in our schools and in our community through art. So thank you all for that participation. And then if we fast-forward really through the summer, fast-forward to the past couple of days, we're in full swing preparing for the start of the school year. So last year, we had our administrators gathering for two days for professional development, team building, and planning for this year. And this week, we welcomed our new staff, both first-time teachers and experienced educators to our district. Every year, we have a kickoff of the New Teacher Academy with a special tradition. District leaders line the sidewalk for a clap-in of our new colleagues. This lively welcome launches is the valuable day of professional development, setting the stage for an exciting school year. So our new staff then spend the day learning about our district and engaging in training sessions. We're thrilled to have such talented educators join our district families. So that was a great event, great to see all of them. I had the privilege of being able to represent the district at the unveiling of the Vell Phillips statue at the Wisconsin Capitol last month, and it was just truly a tremendous event, celebrating a true trailblazer who broke numerous barriers in becoming the first black woman in several key positions in Wisconsin, including Secretary of State. The statue's unveiling holds a special significance for our district as we opened Vell Phillips Middle School last year, while the school and statue serve as powerful reminders that representation matters, providing visible symbols of achievement and inspiration for our students. It reinforced the commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, values that align closely with Phillips' own life. We hope that her legacy will inspire our students to pursue dreams and work towards positive change in our communities. And just knowing that all of our fourth graders, as they take their trip down to the Capitol and study Wisconsin, know that they'll have a place to be able to go to and truly connect with is inspirational, and it's a beautiful work of art. And as we look ahead, then, we're excited to be able to celebrate the public dedication ceremony in open house for our brand-new Menominee Elementary School on Sunday, September 22nd, at 4:00 p.m. The event will feature a brief dedication ceremony and self-guided tours. We invite the entire community to come and join us in this momentous celebration. You can find more information on our website, and we'll be sending out also information in the upcoming weeks. So I'm really excited to be able to show off Menominee Elementary School once we get school rolling. And finally, the thing that we all knew, but now the rest of the country knows, that Oshkosh is the place to be. I'm excited to share that Oshkosh has been named the most desirable real estate market in the country by Realtor.com. This accolade comes on the heels of Oshkosh also being rated among the best places for new college graduates to live. These recognitions confirm, again, what we know, is that our community is an exceptional place to live and learn. As a district, we're continuing to strive to provide a top-notch education, innovative programs, and supportive learning environments that prepares our students for their future success anywhere they go, but especially to be able to keep them here in Oshkosh. By fostering skilled, well-rounded graduates, we're contributing to the workforce and the community that makes Oshkosh such a desirable location. So congratulations to our district and all of the district, all of the community partners that really make Oshkosh the great place that it is to be. And finally, just some opportunities that I've had to learn and serve across the country and both across the country and locally over the last month or so. So it's been a great summer and very much looking forward to the '24-'25 school year. And that concludes the Superintendent's Report for tonight.
Thank you very much. We will move into District Administrator Supplemental Reports. First is the verbal report from July 10th, Board Listening Session, Mrs. Conrad Peters.
Good evening. Listening session on July 10th had three community participants. The discussion focused on the following. First, at-will language. Multiple individuals questioned the inclusion and phrasing of at-will employment terms, feeling they can create an unwelcoming environment. They requested further discussion and research on the topic, suggesting alternative language be explored. Grievance procedure. Concerns were raised about the impartiality and cost of the proposed impartial hearing officer. Process for grievance. A request was remade to review this further, especially if this process is being abused. Liquidated damages. The update on liquidated damages was discussed with a note that the amount for fondulac is double that of the Oshkosh area school district. Other comments were made. Additional feedback included commendations for district volunteers, suggestions for improving the handbook revision process, and the positive impact of recess on school culture.
Sounds like it was a good session.
It was.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Fox with the Menominee Elementary School. Update with Mr. Kunsedine. Good evening.
Well, this is our last meeting to discuss the progress of Menominee Elementary School. So to kind of wrap up where we've been for the last 14 months or so, in the last month, Area C, which is our office area, as well as Area D, received tarazol flooring installation and polishing. All of that is complete. Area C elevator testing and certification is complete over the last month. Case work installation was completed. Building exterior, concrete sidewalks, aprons, asphalt, all of that was completed, and construction cleaning was completed as well. There are a couple items hanging out there that we can discuss briefly, but just kind of some views from the inside. Top left, of course, band room. I think many of you who were on the tour had an opportunity to see a lot of this, but upper-left, band room. Staff workroom in the office area is in the middle top, across the category of all. Classroom in second and third grade. On your top right, Area C, an example of a classroom and the types of desks and furniture and how a typical classroom configuration would look, from grades two through five. An example of the club space, lower bottom, along with that reading nook in the background. Actually, this one is taken just outside of the library, second floor. And then a picture of the library is in the lower right corner as well.
Jim, there's a question. The band room's a music room, right?
Yes, we were gonna get to that, but you're correct.
Yes.
It's not a band room. It is a music room.
Yeah.
And that is located right next to the, I'm sorry, that's where that came from.
Yes.
Yes.
Apologize for that. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, this building is designed simply with one music room that serves both band and vocal-related activities.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Upper-left, a picture of the servery that went through the Health Department inspection today. Middle top is the asphalt playground located next to the port and place in that central playground area between kindergarten and the grade two through five. Upper-right is the staff parking lot on the west side of the building. Lower-left is a picture of the port and place, a rubberized surface playground for all grade levels. Lower middle is receiving, our generator was set in place. This is gonna be on the Melvin Street side of the building, right next to the bus drop-off area. And lower right is the front of the building, fronting Hazel toward the lake. That's gonna be your visitor parking area. So all the landscaping is underway on the last couple of days. Plans are being put in place. So we didn't take a lot of pictures of the fronts of buildings right now because they're gonna look quite different in a couple of days as trees are set and straw is set along the street. One additional question we did receive is, well, what's this gonna look like for students in terms of parent drop-off, bus drop-off? So if you look at the streets, Melvin is a loading zone, as is Hazel, a loading zone. This is very similar to what was there when Webster was open. The bus loading zone is still on Melvin. That is the exact place that it was when it was Webster as well, and that is the entrance into the, direct entrance into the cafeteria for Menominee. Seaworth Trail remained, even though it went through a reconstruction, it remained pretty much as is. So one side will be no stopping, standing, or parking. The other side will be a loading zone. And then, while not signed, Hazel Street, according to the city, can be parking or a loading zone to the south of Seaworth Trail for the kindergarten, first-grade area, as that's Beth Galyazi's intent to have the kids enter the building from that side. Yeah, if I can speak to that quickly, Jim. One of the conversations and part of the overall process of the design of the facility was understanding that kindergarten parents and maybe even first-grade parents may have the desire to walk their kid to the door and be able to park their vehicle. So in early discussions, and what was part of the city approval process, was to provide Hazel an opportunity to park their vehicles, and that's why there's now a new asphalt sidewalk in Menominee Park, as well as a crossing signal with striping in the road to accommodate those parents that would be crossing Hazel. That's correct. The east side of Hazel and the north side of Melvin are not signed. According to the city, they could be used for drop-off or they could be used for parking at the parents' discretion. So work to be completed for the next 30 days and/or this more or less ongoing work right now. Flooring installation is being completed. The last piece of hallway flooring is going down in the kindergarten wing right now. They probably have about 40 feet of rubberized flooring to go down. Ceiling installation is complete. Locker installation is ongoing. We dropped the numbers off today. They'll be riveting those on, as well as the tops. Technology is very busy at Menominee, completing their process. Furniture assembly, they were punching out furniture today, and they're finishing the assembly process. Playground fence installation will be completed, or is being scheduled to be completed. And Areas A through D, classroom curriculum items, the moves will be completed tomorrow for all teachers. Teachers return Monday to start unboxing all those items and putting them in place in their classrooms.
The board had an opportunity to tour Menominee earlier this week. It's an emotional experience. The learning environments that are going to be provided for these kids will make a huge, huge difference. I am so thrilled knowing what the other schools offered and what this school offers. It's really, it's very, very impressive, and thank you for all of your work on this project. And Vell Phillips, last year, Oshkosh is going to be set up well for students for a long time to come.
Thank you.
I also had an opportunity to take part in that school, and that school walked through, and I'm sorry I didn't bring Kleenex, because the beauty of what is in that school and the gift that that school is, and Vell Phillips is, to this community and the students and parents, probably for the next 7,500 years, is mind-boggling. And the innovative structures and thinking that went into the design of that school speak volumes to those who were involved in the planning process. So to everyone involved in that planning process and the implementation of that, I say thank you. It's truly a gift for this community, and we have the taxpayers to thank for that and for their insights into designing and supporting schools that are built for the 21st century, not the 20th, and for the changes in curriculum and instruction that have taken place since so many schools that were built in the 1950s were built largely for the offspring of returning men and women who served in our military in World War II. This is a totally different era, and this school will serve our community so well, along with Vell Phillips, for decades to come. So thank you all to those involved.
Thank you.
And I'll just only add that I live in that area. I don't live in, not a direct neighbor, but the prompt to the questions about parking and drop-off was for the people who are in that neighborhood and to see, you know, what it would be like for them and if it adversely impacts the neighborhood. As someone who has driven by every day this summer, it's been pretty great to see the improvements that have happened and the respectfulness that has been of the workers who have been there. They're keeping things clean. They're doing a great job, and it's always been neat to see the progress. And I also have the opportunity to view it from the water every once in a while, and it is an incredible sight for Oshkosh to see, to be able to have that view of a very, a building that shows off our community and our nature areas. But then also, I would also just want to emphasize that I hope that our community, especially those who live nearby to that school, go into it when they have the opportunities to do so. And if they are concerned about things that are happening, because there will be traffic impacts without a doubt, just reach out right away. And I think, because I think it's a learning curve for everybody to figure out where everybody's gonna get dropped off and picked up and how that will go down, so. But it's really cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nihans, Budget Variance Update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the budget variance report for this month is really an update on how last fiscal year is progressing as we work through the audit. We still have a little bit of work to do to close the fiscal year out, so again, there's somewhat of ranges in there in your report at this point. Our operating funds, again, those are the Funds 10 and Fund 27, the general fund and the special ed fund. We anticipate that they're gonna end up with a deficit. I would anticipate that to be somewhere between a half a million and a million dollars, which in our budget is about a half a percent of a variance, which I would consider a pretty reasonable variance. You do want to have a variance, in my opinion. There are districts that will amend their budget multiple times, so they end with a very minimal or no variance. I don't believe in that. I think it's better to show the district more like a business would operate and really be able to evaluate how your budgeting process went by having a variance at the end of the year. Obviously, we'd like it to be on the surplus side, but just as a reminder, for the board, even when we've run with a surplus the last several years, we've been minimizing that by utilizing Fund 46 and capturing more state aid, because we get aid if we transfer money into Fund 46. We're in Fund 10. If we add it to the fund balance, we don't get aid on that money. It's basically lost money as far as the aid calculation goes. Fund 50, I would anticipate to end with a deficit as well. It's probably not gonna be a large deficit. They do have a surplus fund balance, which DPI does encourage us to spend down, so this isn't a bad thing to have a deficit in our current state. Mrs. Stammen, who is our Director of Food Service, when she came into the district, the district had a negative balance, fund balance, overall, and she's worked really hard and done a really good job of getting us in a good surplus position. So I am anticipating that the end balance for them is gonna be in that $1.7 million range for our ending fund balance. So we still have a pretty good cushion there. And again, that is a number that the DPI does watch and wants to encourage us to minimize as much as possible. So this isn't a negative for us to have a deficit at this point in the food service. Fund 80, if you saw in your report, is gonna end up with a surplus. I would anticipate that to be somewhere in the $700,000 to $750,000 range. They do and have, as far back as I was seeing, running a small surplus and carrying a general fund balance. That fund balance is getting to a point where we are watching it, and we are gonna be at a point where we can start making some different strategic moves. We do have a few things coming up that we do need to invest in in that department as well. We have an aging building that for the last decade or so, the district's been talking about needing to replace or move. So we are gonna want a little bit of balance in there to help us offset some of the moving costs, or what are we gonna do with another location. That would also help us minimize what we would have to add on, whether it's a referendum amount or whether we don't have to go to referendum, because we can use their balance. So that'll be a topic that'll be coming up down the road in the Facility and Finance Committee as well, as we kind of try to strategize how we're gonna utilize some of their fund balance. Are there any questions on any of that? I know there is quite a bit right now. Yes?
I'm sorry, what did you say the surplus was for Fund 80?
Fund 80, I would anticipate that to be about $2.3 million.
And when you mentioned earlier about offsetting the costs and potentially using some of these surplus monies in lieu of going to referendum, could you explain that just a little bit more for me?
It would depend on the size of scope and what we're doing, but just as an example of what potentially could do is, down the road, I know what's been talked in the past is moving the Recreation Department potentially to Tipler Building, if that became available. We would be able to utilize some of the surplus to do renovations for office work or some classroom space, where we wouldn't have to tag that all, that whole amount necessarily on a referendum package and try to figure out, add that in with your bonding and all of that. your bonding and all of that. So again, there's going to be some strategy that we're going to have to do with the Finance Committee and the executive team on how do we best utilize these funds. But it is at a point where we, we want to start looking at what we're going to do.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the Recreation Department, I believe the current price tag for upkeep is around 6.5 million, is that correct? For building maintenance?
The deferred maintenance?
Yes, deferred maintenance.
I don't have that off the top of my head. I can, I can get that for you, but I know that-
It's significant, yeah.
The, the building has lived its full life-
Yeah.
And it's, it's to a point where the district needs to make, make a decision on it. I would not recommend putting, investing the money to upgrade that to where we need it, but-
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kemmer, annual alternative education and PK 12 supportive report.
So joining me this evening is Kayla Stosky, who's one of our distinguished Riverside graduates. So in a moment, when we highlight some of our alternative programs, Kayla is going to speak to her experience at Riverside.
Great, thank you.
So as you'll see in the report, every year, we have a committee that comes together to review and update our PK through 12 supportive and alternative education plan. So that's something that's required by law. And that committee typically consists of administrators, pupil service staff, which includes counselors, social workers, ecologists, behavior ISTs, various coordinators and teachers. And really what we do is we take a look at that plan, which is, which was initially established back in 2014, and we just update that to stay current. So different parts of that plan include our alternative education philosophy, the goals and objectives of our alted programming, any applicable laws or statutes, our identification criteria for determining which students meet criteria as being at risk, notification process for students who do identify as being at risk, specific programming and partnerships that we have as a district, and then our monitoring of progress and program evaluation. One of the other pieces that we always review and update along with that is our Program of Services Matrix. So there's a link right within that plan that goes to the matrix and it really lays out all of the programs, partnerships and supports that we have in the district and it is a fairly long list. It's pretty quite, really quite impressive in terms of how much is in that matrix. So one of the things that, that I always touch on are the key changes that the committee recommends each year to that document. So this year, there were only two real changes that we made. The first was the removal of the referencing the dropout real warning system. The reason why we removed that from the plan is because that was something that was eliminated by the DPI. So it's no longer in effect, so we can no longer use it. And the other thing that we added to the manual this year was a link to our Oshkoshway SCL manual. So one of the other things this meeting does is it allows us the opportunity to have discussion on some of the topics surrounding alternative education that may not be explicitly stated in the manual, but nevertheless are important for us to talk about. So some of the key areas that were discussed this year included the, the reading level as it relates to Riverside. Student, we do have a criteria to enter the Riverside program that students have to be reading at at least the fifth grade level. The reason for that is that program relies heavily on utilizing the GED test and students who are not reading, at least at that level, are going to have a difficult time reading the, reading the test and completing the test. So we had a long conversation about that and really how to align our district assessments with the TAE, which is the test that is used by Fox Valley Technical College. So we're changing our criteria in terms of our district assessments to hopefully, like I said, align more with the Fox Valley Technical College tests. We also talked about middle school alternative programming. That's a topic that comes up every year. While it could be helpful in some regards, we also want to make sure that we don't create an alternative track that starts in middle school that makes it difficult for students to transition back into a traditional classroom setting. So it's something that we also discussed. And then finally, we talked about students who enter our New Start Program, which is another program I'll highlight, that have lower math skills that might make it difficult for them to pass the GED math test and what we can do to provide earlier and better intervention for those students. So in terms of the, the programs that I highlighted in the report, the first program that we're going to talk about is Riverside. And as I mentioned, that's what Kayla is here to talk a little bit about. So Riverside is a program that we have, which is a partnership with Fox Valley Technical College. It is really probably our most popular offsite alternative program. We utilize the GED test to help students show their equivalency, but there's also a curriculum component that is able to provide instruction for students in the area of literacy, math, science and social studies. So along with that, there's a, a large career focus. And then students are also able to take continuing education credits right there onsite, which is a huge benefit to the program. So with that being said, I'll let Kayla talk a little bit about her experience.
Hi, so obviously you guys know who I am, Kayla Stosky. I graduated from the Riverside program in 2022 and I'm extremely grateful for this opportunity that I got to graduate from there. I was a freshman at Oshkosh and with high school in 2018. I got off on the wrong foot in high school. I was involved heavily with the wrong crowd. I focused more on partying than I did studying. And that, that, I had a cost that I had to pay for my grades. So I was walking that thin line and I fell into a pretty deep depression at the end of freshman year. I had to unenroll from public schooling and focus on getting my mental health back on track. I spent about 13 months in an intensive treatment facility focusing primarily on bettering my depression. While I was doing that, I was trying to push myself through E-Academy, the online curriculum. And long story short, online schooling did not work for me. I had to go back to public school during my junior year and I basically had to work from scratch to regain my standing in public school. It was extremely lonely and very isolating. And once again, I fell into a low point. My grades weren't where they needed to be and I was presented the option general at Riverside. The structure at Riverside is what led me to my, led me to succeed. I got my head in the game and I pushed through it. I was given a second chance at getting a diploma and it's all thanks to the Riverside program. Riverside also reinvented my work ethic. It taught me to push myself in ways that I didn't know I was capable of. The teachers at Riverside provided me with their undivided support and wanted nothing but the best for me. Fast forward to today, I work at Dave Mator State Farm Agency in Reno, Wisconsin. So I, not in a million years would I ever imagine myself doing anything with math. I, not my strong suit at all. But with, I, with that, I was able to obtain my property and casualty insurance license within the first week that I worked at his office. It's very impressive for me. So I was really grateful that I was gifted this second chance. Without Riverside, I probably would not have a GED or a diploma. I probably would have given up and dropped out. And with that being said, Riverside really taught me that nothing is out of my reach and I'm in charge of securing my own outcome. It's led me to be extremely successful in the short amount of time that I've spent in the insurance industry. This program helps kids just like me every day find themselves and reinvent who they are. I'm no longer the girl that I was freshman year of high school, but I am the girl who I've always wanted to be. This program will continue to have success stories just like mine because it allows kids like me a fresh start and a sense of control over their outcome.
I see Mrs. Leader beaming in the background.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, I also want to make sure we acknowledge Lisa Leader, who is our Alternative Education Coordinator, Riverside Coordinator, and she's really the heart and soul of the Riverside program. She does an amazing job. And we had 51 graduates from our Riverside program this year. And if you've ever been at that ceremony, it is very powerful to be a part of it. So great program. Two other programs I briefly wanted to touch on, one of them is our New Start Program. So that's our GED Option 2 program. It's similar to Riverside, except it's only for seniors and really it relies a bit more heavily on the GED test. We have one session of that program housed at North High School and one at West, and each has a cap of 15 students. This past year, we had 31 students who attended the program at some point during the year and we had 27 graduates out of our New Start Program. And then finally, the, the last program I wanted to highlight is True Academy, which is another one of our offsite programs and that's specifically for students who experience difficulties at the, the high school or middle school level primarily due to behaviors. And really with our students at True, our, our primary goal is to transition them back to the, the traditional high school setting with the skills to be successful in that setting. And this past year, we had 37 students attend True throughout the course of the year and 18 of those students were able to transition back successfully at some point during the year or at the end of the school year. And we have 15 of those students returning this year with the hope of transitioning back at semester.
That's great.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kemmer. This is, love to hear the success stories.
If you could just make a comment, please, Mrs. Wyman?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. We have both the moral and a legal obligation to educate all students in our school district. And there is such a need to recognize that all, not all students are the same. They have different life experiences, they have different situations they need to deal with, and so having programs such as these three, which attempt to address the needs of our, our students to help them be successful, to help them, as our excellent representative Kayla did today, share with us what impact this student, this program can have on the students and their families and ultimately our community. So I thank everyone involved with, with these three programs. I did have an opportunity to go to the graduation at Riverside. It's one of my favorite activities of the year because we have many students who are first generation graduating from high school and that is important. And the other program that I had a chance to see this year, thanks to Mrs., the graciousness of Mrs. Fisher, was the True Academy program. And the positivity in that program to help students transition back to the regular comprehensive high school was very impressive. I also had a chance to go back and read your, your report in more depth today after serving as a poll worker yesterday and election inspector, I think is the new term. The, a couple of points you made under major points, the goals section, I, I really appreciated seeing those because it seemed to me that they tied very directly to the district's strategic plan. I could see exactly where they might fit within the district's strategic plan overall to make sure we're providing the, the quality of education that all students and especially those who have had struggles deserve. And then under G, where you talked about some students who are at risk, who are at risk because of low reading scores. I'm hoping that, and I'm, and I believe that you have action plans to address that because without having reasonable reading proficiency, our students will not be the successful individuals they hope to be and, and deserve to be. So at some point, I, I really welcome an opportunity for you to come back and share with us on, on the objectives, whether that's part of the reports, ongoing reports on key performance indicators or something else, and also on G in terms of how are we, how, I'm wondering, how are we going to address the low reading scores of students in these programs in order to help them be more successful? Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now have updates on Title IX regulations and this is Mrs. Johnson and Attorney Kapocius.
Good job. Good evening.
Good evening.
Excuse me. So as shared in your staff report in April of this year, the Department of Education issued its final, the final Title IX rules that apply to complaints of sexual discrimination occurring on or after August 1st. So some of the key changes aimed at enhancing protection and clarifying processes was the definition, definition of sex, including discrimination on the basis of sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy or related conditions, sexual orientation and gender identity, revised standard of harassment. Training, as shared, training needs to continue in the regulations of 2020 and we also need to train on the new regulations. The reason for that is those complaints that happened before August 1st, we need to follow the previous regulations and then those happening August 1st or beyond, we would follow the new regulations. Complaints formerly needed to be in writing, they need to be written, and now they can be orally given as a complaint. There's a broader scope. It covers conduct that impacts our programs and activities, no matter where it happens. And then some of the efficiencies that I'd like to note are the, the expansion of our informal resolution options. Formerly, if they weren't available, we didn't need to offer them and now that, now we need to always offer them. The only time that we wouldn't is if the complaint or the grievance, the grievance is an employee and student complaint. It emphasizes the prompt, prompt and equitable handling of grievances with a focus on minimizing delays at each stage of the process. And then the investigation process, the removal of sending each party, or this is really an efficiency we're looking forward to. Previously, we had to give each, the complainant, the respondent, an opportunity to review our findings and give them 10 days to respond. This has been removed, so it really shortens the timeline of these grievances and the processes. And now I'll turn it over to Mark to discuss the number of states and organizations who have challenged the implementation of these final rules.
Yeah, thank you. There's, you know, these final rules were implemented, or I should say, they came out in, in April, okay? Shortly thereafter, there's been a number of states that have litigated this matter. There's currently 26 states that are not subject to the new, or I should say, the final rules as, as set forth in April. In addition to that, there is a case in Kansas where a federal judge has identified what they refer to as plaintiff organizations, and there's three of them, Moms for Liberty, maybe Young American Foundation and-
Female Athletes.
Female Athletes United, okay? So those are considered plaintiff organizations. And to the extent that any members of those plaintiff organizations have standing in a school outside of, you know, the area upon which this judge has jurisdiction, those schools are prohibited from enforcing the new final rules set forth, okay? And that includes schools within the Oshkosh area school district. Okay, not all, but some, okay? And so that obviously, and Oshkosh is no different than a lot of other school districts throughout the country, you know, addressing this kind of conflict of the law. What makes Wisconsin slightly different is that one of the biggest issues as it relates to the Kansas decision was what Sabrina mentioned earlier, which is the expanded definition of sex-based harassment, okay? That, that obviously was, was one of the biggest issues that was set forth. However, in the Seventh Circuit, of which Wisconsin, Illinois and Indiana are members in Seventh Circuit, we have a case out of Kenosha, the Whitaker versus Kenosha Unified, which interpreted Title IX to include sex-based harassment that affected a child that was transgender, okay? So the reality is, we still are operating under that definition based on the Whitaker decision regardless of how the Kansas injunction applies to those schools. Now what that Kansas injunction means for Oshkosh is that for the schools that have a member within the plaintiff organization, they would essentially be operating under the pre-August 1st Title IX rules. Now the benefit is that Oshkosh has both the pre-August 1 rules as well as the post-August 1- 1 rules. So depending on the school that the child is at would depend on how the policy is applied or which a policy would be applied. So it's complicated. But I would say, the good news is that you have an existing policy, that that policy remains in effect, you know, subject to, without the benefits perhaps of the efficiencies set forth.
I'll start with one of my questions. Under number five, E, it's the broader scope where this covers conduct that impacts OASD programs and activities regardless of if it occurs outside the United States or outside of our educational program or activity. How does that work with social media? How can, we just got rid of 20 teachers. Who's going to do this work? It would seem to me that we're going to have to, maybe there won't be that many, but how do we fit that into our schedule to be looking at social media, Facebook, he said, she said? I would think that would be a lot.
Well, one, there would have to be a complaint that you're following up on.
Right, right.
And the complaint doesn't necessarily have to be generated by a quote-unquote complainant as the expanded rules permit, you know, it could be filed by another person. But there's no affirmative duty to go out there and search for it.
Absolutely.
So I guess that would be the response. You treat it no differently than you would any other complaint or become aware of a circumstance.
So we do have two coordinators here in the district. So those complaints would come primarily to myself. And then we also have Matt Kammer, who is our second coordinator. We don't know what the scope of the complaints that will come in.
Right.
But as we have them, if they are coming in a lot faster, there's more work to be done. We'd have to have the conversation of, if we are manned, to be able to work through all of the complaints.
That's one of my concerns. Mrs. Carolyn?
Are we at risk of losing federal funding? And if so, how much? And what is that process?
Well, that's a big question. And I'll start by saying, the Oshkosh Area School District is a recipient of federal financial assistance. Now, to what extent you receive, you know, federal aid, you know, it's going to be found in the form of special ed, it's going to be found in the form of food service, you know, various grants and the like. I'm going to just kind of guess it's some percentage of, you know, 10 to 20 percent. But, so obviously, as a recipient, you have to follow certain guidelines. It's part of a grant contract. As it relates to Title IX, okay, you currently have a Title IX policy in place. And the question is, I believe, if you did not act on the new rules, would that jeopardize your funding? Is that the question? And I think the answer to that is, it's unlikely. And the reason I say that is because, one, there would have to be a complaint, an investigation, and then ultimately, what's called the OCR, Office of Civil Rights, would issue a corrective order or corrective action plan to the district. And the reality is, that'll take a long time. Okay? To our knowledge, we've done some research on this, there's been no other agency recipient in this case that has not received federal financial assistance. But it's, but I would tell you that it's obviously theoretical.
There has been a number that's been floating around. Where is that number coming from? I think it was 6 million or something.
What number are you referring to?
The potential funding loss that we have.
Yeah, I would defer to business office to see what our financial, what federal funds are received annually.
Yeah. Drew, do you have that number, by chance, the special ed funding?
Everything all in would be about 8 percent of our revenue. The title funds, the number we had calculated when it was just looking at like the title grants that we sign assurances for is in the neighborhood of 5 and 1/2 million. But when you include everything within the federal government, it's about 7 to 8 percent of our revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Malik?
Two, I guess it's a multi-layered question. One, are we in compliance with federal law and federal regulation right now, as it stands in Wisconsin? And then, two, does anyone in this district, when we are seeking Title IX funds in the future, have to assert that we are in compliance? And would that further jeopardize? And then final part of the question is, what other liabilities are we open to if we do not adopt these new policies?
Well, as I mentioned, I'll start with the last one, which is to say, I believe that by virtue of us being within the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, that many of the issues that were set forth in the complaint in Kansas are largely, are even spoken for. Okay? So, and then related to that, I believe the second question, going back in time here, was what other liabilities would you have? So I think that effectively responds to that liability, which is to say, if there's a complaint for sex-based harassment, the district would investigate and would conduct, you know, the appropriate process. So there would be no liability from that perspective. The only liability potentially would be, as we mentioned before, the expanded, you know, location essentially, you know, that Title IX violations might occur. So for example, if there was a school trip and it happened to be outside of the United States, and there was a, you know, a claim of sexual discrimination, under the older rules, okay, there wouldn't be jurisdiction. Now there would be. Okay? So that would potentially be an issue that would come forward. And again, to our knowledge, there's been no recipient of federal financial assistance that has been cut off as a result of not adopting new regulations at this particular time.
Is there an affirmative requirement, though, that a staff member or someone who is filing these applications state that we have policies in place that are in compliance with current final rules under Title IX?
Yes.
So someone will have to assert that. Would our district be able to do that if we are not in compliance, if we do not have these new policies in place?
Yeah, I think, I think the answer is there is a policy in place, it's just not adopting the new final rules, right?
Right. So would we be able to assert that we have adopted the new final rule and therefore are entitled to aid if we have not passed the policies that reflect the new final rule?
I would say this, the policies are sufficiently in flux nationally, to the point where the majority of the states in the country are not subject to the new final rules, that, I'm not, certainly I'm not taking a position here, I'm just telling you what we believe, and we've talked about this at the firm extensively, again, the likelihood of having federal funds withdrawn is small.
Right. But that's still not answering the question of, would someone be able to assert that we are in compliance with these final rules and have policies in place if they have not been adopted? Because someone has to press the button saying, yes, we are in compliance. How could we actually assert that as a district?
Yeah, I don't believe that technically the district is in compliance if you have not adopted the final rule.
And that would be one of our concerns moving forward, without the adoption of it.
And I guess what I would, what I've, when I've talked to other boards and other administrators about this similar issue, again, I don't see a tremendous risk for boards to adopt the new final rules because, again, this will likely be resolved at the Supreme Court level. Okay? And it may be resolved before the end of this calendar year. At this pace, I mean, there's already been two circuits that have chosen to not overturn an injunction. Okay? So we have, you know, kind of momentum trending towards a Supreme Court decision. Okay? So for that reason, in addition to the fact that the new regulations, the new rules, provides for some greater flexibility for schools and for Title I coordinators to reach a more prompt, or in which cases, informal resolution. So I don't necessarily believe that the new regulations are problematic at all from the procedural perspective. And then from the substantive side, which is to say the definitional parts, A of all, we're under the Court of Appeals, Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals rule, and secondly, it's likely going to be resolved at a body, you know, at the Supreme Court level. Maybe. Right? Because no one knows what cases the Supreme Court is going to take or isn't going to take, you know? And we have separate rulings, you know, all over the country with different interest groups lobbying for different interests and different courts making different decisions based on, let's just be real, probably political leaning feelings. What matters to me most, and has always mattered to me, is that we're protecting and safeguarding all kids. Title IX's done a lot of really good things. You know, I have daughters that play sports, and they likely wouldn't be able to do that without Title IX to the degree that they've been able to. So I guess what I'm kind of hearing is there's a lot in flux, you know, a lot of different court cases going on. But as a board member, I'm going to vote, if this ever comes up again, and I don't know, but to make sure that all kids are being protected in our schools. And yes, there is some, like, E, when I read that over, the broader scope, you know, there's some vague areas there too. But the way I interpreted it, right, if OASD's hosting something, or if a kid's going on a field trip somewhere, right, we want those kids to be safe whenever they're within our care, I would think, you know, wherever they're in our care. I mean, if my kid was doing something that they weren't supposed to be doing to another child, I would, or, and/or had something happen to them that shouldn't have happened to them, I would want to make sure that we were able to address that. So thanks for all the questions. I don't know if anyone else has any more, but those are my thoughts.
Kelly, do you have a question?
Barb first. Thank you. So under, in your staff report, under three key communications, letter E, I just have a couple of questions that I'm wondering about. About in the middle of that paragraph, you note that another list was published on July 26th, including three Oshkosh schools that are attended by minor children of Moms for Liberty members. We've had some history in the district of a group, I believe they're called Winnebago County Moms for Liberty, who would challenge some of our classroom and/or library materials. Our policy on challenging materials limits those challenges to people who either live in the district or have children attending the district. So my wondering is, based on what you've written here, how do we know that there are minor children of Moms for Liberty who attend those schools?
That's a good question. Because this, obviously, there's thousands of schools that are affected. And I believe the judge has taken the position that they're minors and they're not going to be disclosing their names. So the judge has independently verified this information.
And where we've taken the information from is the court case, like in Kansas, as they would public update lists. So that's what we're verifying from those lists. So that's why our three schools are on there.
So I think what I hear you saying then, that there has been verification that whomever or parties involved actually have kids in those schools in our school district.
Yeah, I assume the judge has asked for an affidavit, you know, sworn affidavit that says that if I'm a member of the plaintiff organization, I have a child at this school, and that's why it comes in.
Okay. Again, I go back to an earlier statement I made regarding a previous report, and that is, I know we have a legal and a moral obligation to educate all kids. And I know on this agenda, we also have an upcoming report on safety. I consider this to be a safety issue for children who need to be supported emotionally and socially as well as physically, and who need to maximize their education in an environment that promotes safety. And that includes all kids to me. And so I'm really concerned about, I believe in minority rights, but I also believe in the rights that we, and the obligations that we have to educate all kids morally and legally. And so this, this whole issue concerns me, especially if it involves people who do not live in our school district and do not have children who attend here, any more than I would have a right to go to another neighboring school district and complain about their programs. I don't have that, I don't have an interest, I don't have children there. I live in this district, and so I'm confused by all this, these court challenges, because I think it puts our kids at risk.
One of the things I always remind people in other districts to, you have a pupil nondiscrimination policy. Okay? You have 2260, I'm guessing it's 2260, which speaks clearly right out of statutory Wisconsin statute, 11813. Talks about the different protected classes, you know, including students with disabilities that are, you know, you cannot discriminate based on any of those criteria. And that would also include harassment as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Hess, do you have anything?
All right. Stephanie was first.
Mrs. Carolyn?
Kelly had something.
No, go ahead.
You can go first. I'm sorry.
So I think I've got a couple of questions and a few comments. I think on July 17th, I participated in the Wasby legal update, and I think they told us that definitively, no school system has ever lost funding because of a Title IX issue kind of thing. So I think that's, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards telling us that. So I, I think last time I spoke, I said, I couldn't find any, but I can't say that I'm the definitive person in terms of looking up this kind of stuff. But if Wasby says it, I kind of tend to believe it. I'm curious about, so there are these eight federal cases, and I think all eight of them ruled against the Title IX rules, against the Department of Education issued injunctions. Then two cases went to the Circuit of Appeals, and both of those upheld the injunctions, correct?
Correct.
Is there not also, I thought there was something where the Department of Education has appealed to, directly to the Supreme Court, to try to get a limit in terms of, they are saying, hey, there are elements of this that we want. Can you tell us a little more about that?
Yeah, so in other words, not every part of the final rules needed to be separated.
Right.
And interestingly, the Kansas judge took up that argument and rejected it, and then under the theory that that's something that the feds could have proposed, as they could have proposed, all right, if these, you know, severability clause basically, if these get challenged, the rest go forward, the feds did not put that in there. Okay? So they didn't have that ability to sever various elements of the new final rules.
Good. And, so I think in the Kansas case, the one that is impacting us, you know, I think a number of them talked about the concept of how the law was made, or whether that imposed financial issues on the states. So there's kind of these meta-issues. But this Kansas one specifically dealt with an individual child. And in part, that's why the injunction is applied to all these different organizations. But I think they said something to the extent of the personal involvement, the issue as to why to why it applied to individuals was a question of suppression of free speech, that they felt like, I think the judge said, something to the extent of, hey, I've asked all the attorneys in the room, can you tell me what advice I need to give to parents in terms of what is allowable speech in regards to some of these issues, and no one could say anything. And he said, well, if you could potentially get punished, but you can't tell a parent how to advise a kid, that's going to suppress free speech. So my question is, if we were to vote and adopt these rules, is that the risk that we face, that some member from Moms for Liberty, a plaintiff organization, comes forward and says, hey, I believe my child is suppressed in terms of free speech, is that a type of ruling where we can say that's a risk for us, or?
I don't believe that the final rules would change that risk analysis, again, using the Whitaker decision as the basis for that within the Seventh Circuit.
Okay. And my final question is in regards to, I think you had suggested that the injunction will now apply to, definitively apply to the three schools, and that somehow the judge determined it was good enough, so we're buying that argument. So what happens if a child who is in, I think we were at West and Carl Trager Middle?
And Trager Elementary.
And Trager Elementary.
Those three, yeah.
So what if a middle school child or a high school child is participating in a track meet over at North? Now, is there a mixture of rules here where the North kids get to go under the new, if we were to pass this, North kids go under the new Title IX, West kids are under the old Title IX because that school is enjoined, and does that create, is that a problem in terms of equal protectionist clauses, or?
Wouldn't be an issue under the equal protection clause, it would just be more of a procedural aspect. You'd probably err on the side of granting the greater rights to the child based on the venue, so I think that would be how we would construe that. That would be an interesting situation, I'm not going to lie to you, that would be a...
You want to take that one?
Yeah.
What, is anyone else?
I have a question. Go for it, Chris.
So within this litigation, because I think it's good for the public to hear, if you could summarize it, what are the lawyers obstructing to in Title IX that they don't like, right? What rights in your submation are being violated, and what parts of the Title IX policy are these groups most opposed to?
Okay, so what they're most opposed to is the expanded definition of sex-based harassment. Okay, and their argument is that Title IX says the word sex, period, right? And if you look at the legislative history, when the educational amendments of 1972 were written, I believe it went into law in 1975, there was a pretty commonly understood definition of sex, you know, male or female. And so to expand it to include harassment, okay, is an expansion of the word discrimination. And then secondly, and this is really the crux of the issue, defining sex-based harassment to include things other than discrimination or harassment based on male or female status. Okay, and, fortunately, my computer went dead, but I have, oh, I can log in, I mean, they just have it, it's going to be based on, sex-based harassment can include gender identity, one's, you know, trans sexual status, pregnancy-related conditions, again, just essentially the sexual orientation. And I'll note, by the way, that Wisconsin law already protects students based on sexual orientation. Okay, so there was, that was the crux of the issue. Secondly, they, the Department of Ed did not define the word sex, but they did define sex-based harassment, what examples of that, okay? So that was primarily an issue. One of the other primary issues, you know, it always kind of boils down to bathrooms, right, at the end of the day, like, and so what, the new rules would say that a student may use a restroom based on their gender identity, okay, and a school cannot make a child go through anything more than what's considered de minimis harm, you know, in order to access those restrooms. Okay, so in other words, you can't make a child, you know, submit a 20-page document, you know, signed by, you know, eight doctors, that says that they're allowed to use this restroom. That would be more than a de minimis harm, okay?
So these protections are already in state law, right? That's what you said?
Well, it says, it specifically says sexual orientation in chapter 118.
Okay, so the protections are in state law, but the groups are opposed to the protections being put in federal law?
Correct, and on top of that, they're arguing that there's, you know, religious liberties involved here under the First Amendment. Okay, so in other words, some, one of the arguments is that my religion identifies males and females, and to deviate from that would be, would not be, would be too...
Okay, thanks, I was just trying to get, there's a lot of, anyone watching at home is probably like, what exactly is going on in here?
Yeah, they're not objecting to the procedural nuances of the matter, they're objecting essentially to the Department of Ed's definition of this, okay? And I guess this was coming down the pike, based on the Bostock decision that you may have been familiar with in 2020, which interpreted Title VII, which is employment discrimination law, which then said that discrimination based on, you know, gender identity falls under Title VII, and so that we kind of naturally anticipated that the Department of Ed would look to Title VII for guidance with Title IX, and that's pretty much what happened there. Thank you.
So I'm struggling with the question, what is best for students? Because when every decision I make, I ask myself, what is best for students? And I don't see how us getting into this conversation is helping any students. I don't think it's, I don't think the school board is the right place to have this kind of conversation. So I would like to see this go back to committee and come back to the board for a vote. Are you saying that we can't do that, or?
That was our plan, to bring this back to policy and governance.
Yes.
On our September meeting, to have continued conversation, and then have it go to the board in the future.
And then have it go to the board. And now that we have a new board member, we will not have a tie, so, okay.
And it's also, we can't ever revote on the same thing, so it was really good to have Sabrina and Dr., I'm sorry, Attorney Kapocius with us this evening, and as things are changing, ever-changing, we have new information that it would have to come in a different way.
Can I ask, since we do have Attorney Kapocius with us, so we have our legal representation for the district here with us on this issue. You stated, and I think Tim also stated, that as far as you know, no school system has ever lost funding because of a Title IX issue. However, have the facts always been the same as they are now, where we would have to have a staff member assert that either we are in compliance with the current regulations as they apply to, in the Seventh Circuit, or not? Has that fact pattern ever happened?
I'm not aware of any fact patterns similar to that.
Okay. And so I'm talking, I think we do always have to worry about students first, and looking at, students are coming back to school within the next couple of weeks. If there is a gender identity discrimination case that comes up, which is based on sexual, sex-based harassment, that case occurs, we get a complaint, the district gets this complaint somehow through our Title IX coordinators, what are our gaps, what are our potential grounds for liability that we face as a district right now?
Well, I mentioned before, you know, we're in the Seventh Circuit, right? So we would, the district has a duty to follow up on complaints related to sex-based harassment.
Do our policies currently explicitly reflect the Whitaker decision and cover the same things in writing that are covered in Title, in the new Title IX regs? It's the same definition of gender identity, including pregnancy, including gender identity, and things like that.
Including those, they're not in our current?
Nor do I believe that Neola recommended anything other than what's actually in the statute, which is...
Right, but it would recommend putting in the regs that...
Well, you'd follow the regs, right? I mean, you don't repeat all the different federal regulations, you just...
But if we don't have, if we don't have policies that actually do that, would we be open to liability if, say, we didn't handle it quite as it is required under the current regs, in effect, in Wisconsin?
Well, and if you have the policy, Sabrina, I don't believe that it did get deep in the weeds on identifying the various characteristics of what's considered sex-based harassment. The policy, even revised, did not include that.
One other point of clarification that I wanted to make, when you guys are asking about state law, that, and state law and other decisions, that Title IX or Title VII decisions, you said they've addressed sexual orientation. I think they're actually two different points, that the state law addresses protection for sexual orientation. Does it protect the same level, gender identity, as defined? If I'm understanding correctly, the Title IX, Title VII issues do, but at the state level, we do not have the same requirements and expectations from, of us.
Yeah, so chapter 18 would say the word specifically sexual orientation.
And that's not the same as gender identity, is it?
Probably not, yeah, I don't believe there's been a court that has interpreted sexual orientation to mean anything other than what we've concerned, yeah.
Okay.
I just, I forgot to add that I think it's important to note that the action that's, the organization that is driving this effort is labeled as an extremist group and a hate group, so I just think that that should be said, I don't, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for enlightening us this evening. We, I hope we are better educated than we were when we came in. As we mentioned, it will go back to Policy Committee and work through it there, and we'll see what happens with it at that point.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Okay. Thank you for the small delay. This evening, we have four people for our agenda-related public forum, we have no one for the non-agenda-related public forum. If you would come up, state your name and your address, that would be fantastic, and our first person is TJ Hobbs. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is TJ Hobbs, my address is 520 High Avenue in Oshkosh. I just learned a lot, I'm glad we had that session, I think everybody here wanted that, and hopefully we all learned something. So I want to, I guess, pivot from what I was going to say to kind of just go into some gut feelings here about things that stuck out to me. Seven to eight percent of our school district revenue is at risk right now because we are currently not in compliance. That's what I just heard from the lawyer here who didn't know what gender identity was, and from the gentleman over in this direction, I forget which one, said about seven to eight percent, but those facts put together, I also am hearing a lot from folks that it has never happened before, that we've lost funding from a Title IX violation. I don't have the history in front of me, forgive me, I don't think we've ever been this in violation of a Title IX compliance as we are currently. There's 22 schools in the district, there are three that we all know, the two Trager schools and the West School, that are not affected by this, but the remaining 19 are out of compliance right now, and as Molly was saying, we can't, unless we want to lie in a federal form and have someone here lie in a federal form and sign your name on that, we cannot attest that we're in compliance right now if we get a gender-based discrimination complaint on day two of school in one of the three schools, one of the 19 schools, rather, that are legally obligated to comply based on federal law, as it is now. I don't care what the Supreme Court might do, I don't think any of you need to care about what the Supreme Court might do, because now we're out of compliance. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Cora.
Hello, my name's Cora Novy, I'm at 3325 Logan Drive, Wisconsin, here in Oshkosh, and I'm the Director of Oshkosh Pride. And I have a few questions for you and the board. We've spent an hour talking about this, and I've seen a lot of, so let me ask you, I have several questions, so, we've spent an hour talking about this, you have a teacher shortage, correct? Is there a teacher shortage, open positions in the district?
We have some open positions.
You have some open positions? Okay.
But we can't, also, I have to say, because this isn't agenda-driven, we're not able to speak to you.
Okay, okay, all right, so it's not agenda-driven, okay. Okay, so as far as I understand it, and some of the articles I'm reading, there's already a strained budget, right? Okay, as far as I understand it. Why, and this will be a rhetorical question that you don't have to answer, but I want you to think about it, why is this such a roadblock? Why is it, why have we spent an hour discussing this, especially, you say you care about the students, but half of you are not sure what gender is, especially transgender. I know the lawyer said transsexual earlier, that's not the correct term, it's transgender. I'm a transgender woman, my pronouns are she/her, and I will only accept those pronouns. I will not be addressed any other way, and in the workspace, I have, I'm protected by that, our students should be too, especially when they don't, they're not over 18, don't have a voice. So I'm just imploring you to go beyond what, just really consider, what is this fight really about? Why is it such and trans, I know we hear a lot about religious liberty, and quite honestly, I grew up in Christian education all through college, I don't remember any of my doctrinal classes mentioning only male and female, and that's the way it should be. If you feel it is, awesome, good, you get to believe that, you don't get to impose those beliefs on anybody else. And that's actually what religious liberty is, is that your right to believe that is protected, but the other person that identifies as something else is also, also is right to be protected. So I guess I'm here to say, is, you know, with Oshkosh Pride, we're paying attention, and we're going to be involved in this conversation if it keeps on going, but we've spent an hour on this conversation when clearly there are other issues on this agenda, there are other issues that we need to be doing for students in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Laura Ackman?
Laura Ackman, Chapter Chair for the Moms for Liberty Winnebago County. I live at 4477 Fairview Road, Larson, Wisconsin. I do represent parents in your district, and I'm pretty sure your lawyer doesn't live in Oshkosh, and you still listen to him, so I would respect that you please give me that same respect, and we are a parent organization that's really trying to protect parents' rights, and you can call us extremists and all the nasty names, but that's not very professional. I would like to address this group because I think we should spend more than an hour because this is a significant change. The old Title IX, too, was two paragraphs, and it was meant to protect girls and women in sports and education. The new policy, the new regulations are 1,500 pages. Do you know what's in those 1,500 pages? Because if you haven't read it, then you don't understand it. And I thought your lawyer actually did a fairly good job of articulating all the finer points of what's going on. There's a lot of lawsuits out there, and until those are all run through the court system, there are risks on both sides, no one's going to deny that. Moms for Liberty... Moms for Liberty wants all children protected. You currently have, your current policy protects all the transgenders, the males, the females. Protects bullying, any type of discrimination. There's not, anything that's not covered in the old policy, so there's really a low risk of that. What the risk is with the new policy is it does potentially, in some instances, put the transgender student above the girls. That's, that's what the argument is around changing Title IX from being protecting girls to now including the transgender population. Not that they shouldn't be, but there are other policies to protect them. If a transgender person wants to go into the opposite bathroom under this law, you must let them. If a girl complains because they're not comfortable with a male naked in their locker room, she has no recourse under this new policy. And if you read the lawsuit, which I did send to this Board, it clearly states from the judge that he didn't agree with the commentary from the plaintiffs. They said, "If a transgender child wants to use the opposite bathroom, you must let them. But if a girl is offended by that, she can go use a separate bathroom." You cannot ask the transgender person to go use a separate bathroom. How is that fair? You have girls. If they're offended and, and there's a naked man in their, in their locker room, you're going to say that's okay, that they should go to a different bathroom? How many girls do you have in this school district? How many transgender do you have in this? Isn't there a different solution to that problem? That's at the heart of this. Your old policy, because this has come up in several other school districts, you are in compliance of state law 118.13 and the federal statute PI 901. Your current, current policy is both state and federally compliant.
Laura, if you could finish up.
Thank you.
Wow, that was great timing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our final speaker this evening is Josh Vianola.
Yeah, that's me. Yeah, I'm one of those extremists. I'm one of the Moms for Liberty members on Facebook. Yep, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that anybody's, even considering.
Could you state your address, please?
My name's Josh Vianola. I live at 933 West Ninth Ave. Sorry, I've been a little chapped for a while here. Yeah, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that you guys are even considering letting bathrooms and locker rooms being co-ed. I don't care how they identify or whatever, whatever kind of delusion people live in, whatever kind of mental disease that they have. Boys are boys and girls are girls. It's simple and basic. It's always been that way, and that's why we have separate bathrooms. I'm not going to allow my girls or my boys to shower with the opposite sex because I don't want them fondled or tainted by one of these deranged people sexually. And that's what lingers in these groups of homosexuality and transgenderism, is sexually explicit ideology. My daughter goes to Franklin. She brought home books about how it's okay that two parents are gay in a household, and it's okay for boys to be girls and girls to be boys. What kind of delusion are you guys living in? Are people really retarded? We're still having these talks? Like, what is going on here?
We don't use that word.
No, it's a, it's a word. I can use that if I want. Yes, I can. And, yeah, I just, I can't believe people are so open-minded, their brains have literally fell out. Does nobody know why we had opposite sport teams and opposite bathrooms for boys and girls to protect both sexes from one another? If they, if they want to play some delusional game and we have to allow it, then they should have their own bathroom and their own support, their, their own sports. It's as simple as that. You know, they shouldn't be allowed to win and come and shower in the girl, in the boy's locker room. I don't want one of these succubuses coming in there spoiling my young gentlemen, you know?
Okay.
Hey, what, it's, it's a word, I can use it if I want, yeah. Yeah, I can.
Not here. Sorry.
Okay, or what? Yeah. So, yeah, either way, I just, I think you guys all must have some type of mental disease even considering this kind of thing.
Sir.
You know, I don't understand what's going on with you guys, that we're even considering this. You guys need to vote no, absolutely not, and come back to reality. You guys need to embrace God, you know, all this kind of talk, dude, from, from the name of the flag, dude, it is against God.
Thank you, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can wear it where I want. It's in my big old dictionary, this day. Okay, I want it here now.
Okay. Okay. That's all we have for gender-related public forum this evening. Next, we're moving on to workshops and the safety plan, Mrs. Conrad Peters.
At this time last year, I had presented to you the safety plan, which is part of our key performance indicators for our district strategic plan. Our district strategic plan is divided up into four core areas, and the safety plan comes under the Safe and Healthy Schools. Our safety plan makes up 40% of the star rating within Safe and Healthy Schools, and we are currently at four stars in that core area for the 2024 strategic plan. With our core area of Safe and Healthy Schools, in this KPI, we need to have a comprehensive safety plan that reflects state requirements, including safety drills, school safety evaluations, professional development, training, and emergency response. The school safety plan is reviewed annually, and that's what we are doing today. And within your Board packets, you have the Emergency Operations Plan that is not released publicly, but you do have that within your Board packet for review. The safety plan is reviewed by the Office of School Safety for Compliance in that Wisconsin State Statute of 118.07. So, once this is approved, it will go to the Office of School Safety. So, why this matters. School safety plans and training support students and staff to be prepared, stay calm, and feel safe in a time of crisis. And then, a strong safety plan allows all of our stakeholders to focus on maintaining a school environment and learning and not worrying about outside, outside circumstances. We use the FEMA framework, which is based on having plans for prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. With our safety plan, our 2024 safety plan is at a five-star rating, which puts us in our KPIs, which is our highest rating. The key here is that we have adapted and we have completed all required drills, et cetera, within the safety plan. Our celebrations for the 2024 is this past school year. We continue and we will remain to continue to collaborate with law enforcement in Winnebago County and in the city, in the region. And we've been doing that through monthly APTCOT, and APTCOT to expand upon that is the Emergency Preparedness Collaborative Operations Team. I much prefer saying APTCOT every time we're doing that. And we are meeting monthly with safety leaders across the county for training, and one of the things that we do each month is we do a tabletop exercise to ensure that we're practicing and keeping our skills sharp when it comes to our emergency operations preparedness. Last year, we started with a new visitor management system. We had Sunset at Raptor, and we went into a system that really met the requirements of the policy, where we just want to know who is in, who is in our buildings and making sure we're providing a welcoming visitor experience while at the same time enhancing safety and making sure that we have a visitor system that's actually doing that. So, one of the opportunities for improvement, as we started to review our safety plan when we were looking at our star ratings, was we really need to monitor and adapt the implementation of the updated visitor management system based on feedback. So, we started working on that, started working on that this spring and in the summer to make sure, once again, with our PISA, we want to know who's in our building at any given time, but really making sure it is a welcoming experience. And so, we're getting feedback, and we're implementing some of those things, and I'll highlight that in a minute. And then, monitor and adapt school safety plans, training, and drills in real time based on current events and ever-changing threats or concerns that are in our community or in our region. So, reviewing monitoring and action steps. So, once again, a universal procedure for visitor check-in and checkout was implemented, and based on the feedback, here are some of the revisions that we are looking at. So, all visitors will check in at a kiosk station, where they submit their name, reason for visit, and location they are reporting to in the building. Identification is not required. We want to welcome everyone who has an appointment, who is volunteering into our, into our spaces. All visitors will have a visitor tag, and we will get that tag on when we check out. All visitors then, once again, will check out. So, for students, students will also check in and check out, and we've tried to speed up that, speed up that process and be more efficient with that. And so, all students carry an ID. And so, we now have basically, instead of like trying to type everything in the Chromebook, et cetera, you can scan your, you can scan your ID to go in. So, think about it more like when you, when you get on a flight and you scan your boarding pass, we're, we're scanning our, our students to confirm that it goes directly to the attendance system. It gives us accurate information. We can locate visitors, and if there ever is an emergency incident, we have access to know who is in the building at that time. We can account for everybody, et cetera. The procedures meet our policy requirements, and then, I want to emphasize this, for schools and for our school district buildings, locked doors, secured entries and exits, as well as controlled access to buildings, is a key safety strategy. Some of the things that we've learned recently, so for example, in the most recent Mount Horev event that happened in May, one of the reasons that it wasn't more tragic than it was, was because the facility was secure and doors were locked, that the, the individual was not able to access the building. And so, that is just a key piece of demonstrating that having secured entries and exits is a key to any type of security and was one of our first, first areas of defense. The second thing is that the Office of School Safety has updated our Behavioral Threat Assessment and Management or Monitoring. And so, we attended, along with our School Resource Officers, a training in April to go through that new, that new process, and it has been incorporated into our 2425 safety plan. Just this past, was it just last week? We have now an enhanced Alice instructor certified trainer, which is, which is me, and all the updating training protocols have been applied to the 2425 safety plan. Our APTCOT team and our School Resource Officers met on June 25th, and we forwarded, we did a forward planning for the school year to ensure that our agreement between the school district and the police department is actually being followed. And so, that was a great meeting. And then, our School Resource Officer Annual Report was presented to Facilities and Finance just this past week on August 8th of 2024. So, upcoming, upcoming trainings, so tomorrow, all of our OASD administrators, deans, School Resource Officers, and other school leaders, because we know sometimes there are school leaders that are designees that are in charge of the buildings at times, will participate in an annual emergency preparedness training. It's a full day. We will be training on our tactical radio, our communication systems, Alice protocol, which is alert, lock down, inform, inform, counter, and evacuate, our behavioral, behavioral threat assessment and monitoring training, and a walkthrough of our reunification site and processes. The executive team will participate in a tabletop exercise, making sure that we can demonstrate our now, our safety plan, coming up later in August. And all of our Oshkosh Area School District staff complete an Alice training, conduct drills, and engage in at least one tabletop exercise every year. So, we will be going through with building principals on what they're going to be doing for the start of the school year to make sure everybody is, is ready and prepared. So, lastly, if as a parent you're interested in more information about our school safety program, and in particular, Alice, you can go to the Oshkosh Area School District website underneath Safety and Security. Underneath that website page, you're going to find our visitor check-in policy, key components of our safety plan, as well as a video that would help explain some of our safety protocols. And lastly, Speak Up, Speak Out, which the kids will, the students call it SUSO, but basically, it is a, it is a tip line, and any community member can use it, a student can use it, anybody, to be able to report any safety concerns. And being able to use that, it can be anonymous. We encourage, we encourage individuals to submit their names or more information so that we can address everything, but we will absolutely take any type of information. It is staffed around the clock so that tips and information can come in, and then it is directly pushed to either a school official or directly to law enforcement, depending on what the level of the tip is. So, once you, I'm going to say right here, once you submit the tip, please keep the chat window open because we may have more questions to ask you to make sure that we get the information we need to follow up on anything that you are reporting to us. But that is one key strategy that we encourage our families, community, and our students to use. And then, lastly, I have right here, just to, just so you know, that every single classroom, teacher, we have an emergency response binder that every teacher has that has all of these procedures. Like, sometimes you just can't remember everything, right, when it comes to things? So, this is their binder, that is their one-stop-shop for any type of information. And so, when a teacher is leaving a classroom with a group of students, et cetera, one of our training pieces is that you leave with this, you leave with this binder, which gives you key information to be able to address many different emergency situations.
Questions?
I've said it, I've said it in committee, but I really like the Speak Up, Speak Out app. I know that it's helped a number of kids report things that they maybe would have been uncomfortable reporting. And I only bring that up and say it because I think that the community needs to know what a wonderful tool that is. It makes me happy when kids are able to feel comfortable with reporting things that they might not normally be comfortable reporting, so.
And one of our key things we say with our students, with, "If you see something, say something," because it's that information that's going to help us, you know, act or react to any type of situation that we need to respond to.
I was just going to ask, a few years ago, I had the opportunity to participate in an Alice drill with lie, or, it wasn't lie, but some sort of, do you still do that? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, that's what I, that's what I went and was trained in, that's what I went and was trained in last week, where you actually experienced a violent, a violent critical incident. It doesn't have to be an active shooter, there could be different situations, but yes.
Yes, okay, so I found that incredibly valuable to just sort of see what our students go through when they do this training and whatnot, and our teachers as well. If a Board member wanted to do that, could they contact you?
Yep, so please, we can, we can look at additional training for, for the Board as well, so, but keep in mind, every Oshkosh Area School District staff member has access to the training module on Alice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Milley.
I just wanted to reiterate my appreciation that the district decided to Sunset Raptor last year to kind of rebalance the need for school safety and still ensure that our schools are safe, but to make them more welcoming and not have the requirement of a proper, of a certain specific identification to be able to enter the buildings. And I have been, I know, I've entered the buildings now multiple times under the new system, and I still feel like it is a very secure process. I'm curious if there is a next step requirement, or if it just varies by school? Like, the fact that every time I've gone into, especially the larger schools, you are accompanied by a staff member or a student? In general, is that an official step, or is that just something that is generally the expectation?
Yeah, I think it depends on the size of the building, so like, for smaller schools, you may not, you may know exactly where you're going and might, and can get easily to your destination. A school such as like Oshkosh West, or perhaps like Phil Phillips, that's like spread out, a lot of times, that's just supposed to, that's meant to be a welcoming way to say that we can get you to where you need to go without losing your, your way for wayfinding, so.
I'm also curious, do elementary kids also use a log, use, they have identity cards, Um, I'm also curious, do elementary kids also use a log, use, they have identity cards that they will be used to go in and out?
Yeah, so the, the older they get, so for, for young, like for young students, so let's say you drop off your kindergartner and they come in and they check in the office, most of the time, like our school secretaries have like the, have the barcodes and they can just scan it real quick and it goes directly to the student information system.
Any other questions? Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. Um, I want to commend you and the others who worked on this report. Um, as I spoke earlier tonight, safety is everything. And that, to me, is not only physical safety, which this primarily addresses, but also the social and emotional aspects of students um being in a safe environment. Um, my question uh is regarding, I guess, the, the way the KPI is worded. I'm looking at this in a different light today, based on a phone call I had recently. Um, obviously, safe and healthy schools is what it's about, because it's students first, and we have over 9,000 of them for whom we are responsible. My question then is, what about the other buildings in the district, like the Central Office, the Recreation Department, Maintenance Building, and so on? Are there similar plans for them, since these have to be submitted to DPI? Are there other written plans for safety for other facilities in the district?
Actually, this emergency operations plan um covers all um facilities within the district. So even the ma, like even the Maintenance Building, um, so like if, if you've reported to the Maintenance Building, um, and you go in there, they also have like a, do you know what I'm saying, a buzz-in system or a secure entry piece? Um, the Recreation Department, just recently I'd worked with Mr. Helmberg about making sure they're updated and they're following those procedures as well. And so depending on the um, the size of the building, where it's located, um, if it is actually one of our facilities, or perhaps like we're renting it, there may be a little different nuances, but all of them fall under this emergency operations plan.
Thank you. Oh, I'll have another question, but I'll, I'll save that as a future agenda item. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate all of your efforts.
Okay.
Moving to consent resolution agenda, the only one on the consent agenda this evening will be number one, and that will be personnel. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Kelly, second.
Carolyn and DeWitt?
Yep.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
S.
Aye.
Milton.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, uh, number two, use of funds for Core Knowledge Language Arts, CKLA instructional materials.
Need a motion?
Yep, motion.
So moved. Second, Barb.
Discussion. Mrs. Milton.
I'm so excited to be able to ask you these questions and that we are here at this point uh as a district, uh, but I, this is a, a big change and it's a big expenditure. So I'm, I'm curious if you two could explain a little bit the, what it means that this expenditure? First of all, what percentage of students is this covering in staff? And then also, does this, what all does this include? Does this also include support for staff, uh, to train them and then ongoing support throughout the year?
Molly, thank you so much for that question. Uh, before we um provide a detailed answer to that, I want to thank the board for prioritizing literacy um in the way that you have, and thank our superintendent, Dr. Davis, for ensuring that the prioritization of literacy um as stated by the board and as a, um, a key priority of our entire district, um, we've been able to move at a pace uh to evolve our literacy program. And then I also want to give my gratitude to Dr. Brown for her leadership, um, as we've worked over the last several months to take a look at our current state, um, our desired state, and to take the steps that we need to make sure that all of our students have access to high-quality um instructional materials. Um, and that is what brings us here to this conversation, um, given that we have identified CKLA or Core Knowledge Language Arts, um, as the literacy program and set of instructional materials that we're interested in adopting. Uh, and prior to adopting that, we want to make sure that we have the capacity within our system, as well as the expertise of our teachers, um, our leaders, and our instructional coaches, to be able to support full implementation. Um, so Dr. Brown, I'll turn it over to you to um answer some of those questions around the number of students who will be um supported in this uh endeavor, and then also the number of teachers, and then there's a third part to that.
Yes.
Right, it's the professional development, so we should get to all of that. So we have 77 teachers that are going to be um field-studying CKLA, and that's 41% of our elementary students. So we're super excited to see all of this in action. Um, as far as the professional development that's happening, there's a lot. Um, so in addition to some of the things that like Act 20 talks about bringing in, so all of our teach, all of our elementary teachers um will be utilizing keys to literacy and have that training. Um, I can tell you, there have been some teachers who've been getting together this summer, not only to do the course, but to get together and say, what does that mean to us now? And just seeing it different, so that's super exciting that they're embracing it in that way. Um, the other um piece is CKLA themselves are going to be coming in um starting next week, Monday, with all of our leadership team and literacy coaches to do a, uh, overall with them. And then the next day, all of our field-studied teachers, including classroom teachers, special ed, and ESOL teachers, who will be supporting and wrapping around. Um, so that'll be the first uh piece of that. But then there's um another additional 10 hours that they will be coming in throughout the year. Sometimes it's virtually, sometimes it's in person, and doing walkthroughs and answering questions and providing additional support. So feel very well taken care of um by the people at CKLA. They've been wrapping around and very supportive. Um, in addition, we have our own professional development that we're doing around rigor and engagement, and we're very excited about all of those pieces and rolling that out as well. Because we believe that rigor and engagement is what's going to help have high impact with our teachers, which we need to wrap around no matter what curriculum um we were looking at.
Are there any other ways? I mean, you can't, you've kind of already touched on my other question of, this is a pretty large-scale field study. What is this, how is this year setting us up for success next year? And even what do you expect after this one year of it being 41% of the, for helping 41% of students?
So I'll start by saying that one of the reasons why we are doing this field study at this scale, um, across all of our elementary schools, um, and at one of our elementary schools, all of our teachers are, are um field studying this. And then the rest of our elementary schools, we have um at least two grade levels that'll be field studying this. And what we know uh will be important is to have expertise um shared by the teacher and the principal and coaches, being able to work through some of the nuances of this resource this year, so that as we move toward a full implementation next year, we have building-specific expertise that can support their colleagues, um, support with planning, um, also do some of the learning alongside their colleagues. And so a field study at this scale allows us to, next year, um, do a full implementation without some of the typical implementation gaps or dips that we would see otherwise with smaller-scale field studies and um, and pilots. So what this sets us up to do is to provide the instructional materials to our teachers next year, with a plan in place for them to be sufficiently supported with being able to use a new curriculum, um, use new strategies, as Dr. Brown talked about as well, uh, with confidence, um, and with support there in their schools.
Any questions? Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I have a question under the budget. Um, were you note the budget impact? And uh, those are all noted as a negative number? I'm not sure I understand that.
Only that it's a, it's a cost. Um, so this is a, a cost that we planned for. So usually, um, if, if it's a, a cost or an expenditure, when I did the report, I put a negative, and if it's a, an addition to the budget or, or credit, then it would just be there as a, as a number.
I want to uh thank everyone who was involved with this, having a background in curriculum. I understand the scope of what's going on here and the need to really move the district forward for all kids. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Aye.
S.
Aye.
Milton.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
DeWitt.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Excellent, very excited.
Thank you.
Exciting.
And our third resolution, someone say something? Is approval of CISA 6 contracts, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second, Carolyn.
Discussion.
Um, so this is just related to our annual contract agreement that we have with CISA 6. You can see some of the outlined services that we have um on here for, um, for different um specific services that we have through CISA 6. Uh, we also have, um, you know, some individual uh inservicing and, and other services that we would have, that we would maybe be, you know, beyond the scope, but that this would be, um, you know, what we have planned for this year to help support our staff and typically services that we um can most efficiently do through CISA 6. Um, either, you know, not finding somebody to help support that position as a full-time position in our district, um, or uh, um, or, or be able to, you know, have a part-time position, for example. Um, so, uh, so this is, you know, a annual process that we go through.
Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I do have one question on this. CISA 6 does operate as a cooperative, which means that when it makes money, it in turn turns some of that back to the member districts of, I think there are 39 of them. Uh, they do it in the form of credits. So it has to be new services or expanded services, I believe. Are any of these items covered under those co-op credits?
Uh, no, no, the co-op credits would be above and beyond, beyond this. So, um, yeah, and we're certainly appreciative, appreciative of that process, uh, and have uh taken full advantage of what that, um, what that comes up in, as you said, some new products or uh some existing services that, that we would have. So we, we keep close track on that and make sure that we uh take advantage of that opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, call the roll?
S.
Aye.
Milton.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
DeWitt.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, and the next item is Board President assigns uh committee members. Because we have a new committee member, I looked at all of the committees and mixed them around a little bit. I'd like to hand these out to you so you can see how I reassigned. I tried to look at um number of committees that everyone was on and at expertise. I didn't change everything around, but I wanted to get your buy-in before. Before we decided on anything for sure.
Is there an extra?
Oh, it might be too fine.
No, here you go. Is that the second sheet? Everyone have sheet one, sheet two?
We can share sheet two.
I have one sheet.
I have one sheet.
Oh, I'm sorry, you were supposed to take two sheets. Okay, here we go.
What's the difference between the two?
Uh, the second one is like.
Second one is all the.
You have all of the third page.
There's a second page. Do everyone have a second page?
I need a second page.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Take this one back if I might. Okay, so it, you can see that I, um, we took, I took Chris Wright off of policy and put in Molly. I always think it's nice when you have a new board member to put it on, put them on policy. And then Liz was gone, so I put Chris Wright on Facilities and Finance and made Tim the Vice-Chair for that committee. Administrator compensation, uh, replaced Barb Herzog into Liz's spot. Education, I put Barb as the Chair instead of Liz and added Molly onto education. And legislative, I took off Barb and put Kelly into legislative. And on the second page, there is really only one change, and that was the NTEA. I put Barb in there uh instead of Liz because I looked at all the rest and it just had an open spot with her name on it. How does that look? Okay?
I have one change I might suggest, but I don't know how Dr. Herzog feels about it. Um, you put her as Chair of Education. I really value her insight on legislative, but um, so I was wondering if we could possibly do a swap there?
For education?
Actually, I'd like to.
You would?
Education is one committee I, I've never been on.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, never mind.
And I know Kelly's had experience being on legislative before, and I can, I mean, all of us can attend any meeting.
That's true.
So I'm happy to do that and happy to support legislative. I can, I can continue to share with the Legislative Committee.
Yes.
Insights that I get from the WASB.
That would be great.
As your regional representative, so.
Yeah.
I can be helpful in that way if that would work.
Excellent. Well, I'll get this list to Sherry, and she can revise this list and the website and put you on whatever committee notes you need to get on. So that, thank you very much for being so accommodating. And request for future agenda items?
Uh, Dr. Herzog, yes?
Dr. Herzog?
Uh, in light of the, the safety report tonight, and in, and in light of a phone call I had recently with a school board member from another district, I, and, and given that we've had at least three new board members uh join since 2021, when we met with members of the Ashkesh Police Department because of threats that were made to the board, um, which resulted in the addition of a door over here and some other safety measures, I think it's a good idea if we could at least have a written report on some of those summary points, or however it could be shared with the board, um, so that we're, we're aware of the need for this board to be protected. Um, I became aware of a threat today against members of a, a board uh in our state, and that's not uncommon in this day and age. We saw some very heated comments made today at the board table in violation of our civility project, which we say we honor. And so in the, for the protection of the board and anyone in the board meeting and in the building when we meet, I think it's important to reiterate what those safety measures need to be to protect.
I agree.
People who are willing to serve and those who support them. So I would like to see an update on uh some safety measures that this board could be afforded, as well as the audience and everyone present in the building.
So just so I'm clear, what I heard was a report, a written report, um, on safety measures for school board meetings, and that would relate to school board members. Is that accurate?
I guess it could take a different, a couple of different forms. It could be a written report, it could be having Ashkesh PD reps coming back to the board and sharing with newer members, as well as reminding us, um, veterans what safety measures we might need to take. We also had um what was considered a verified, a verified uh death threat against board members resulting in um legal documents saying that that individual can't be on school grounds, can't have any contact with board members. I think it's important that we protect people.
So just, just to clarify, I just need some clarity around what, what that presentation, what the expectation is for that agenda.
I would like to cover um safety for the board meetings, whether that's, that's board members and anyone present in the building at that time, whether that's a written report, or you want to bring in Ashkesh PD to do a presentation verbally, we can talk about that later, but it could take either form. I just, I just want the information out there to protect people in this building so that they know if something happens that might be defined uh at a building level, we know where to go and what to do to protect people.
Very good. Any announcements?
I have one.
Yes.
I can't remember if it was in Dr. Davis's good news report, but shout out to Tyrese Halliburton, the gold US men's basketball team. I think that's pretty cool for us.
Yeah.
Very nice, very nice.
It will be in an upcoming report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll save this.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
No, it wasn't Barb.
Ray.
I second it.
We have like a final.
Ready?
Alright.
Alright, Milton.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
DeWitt.
Aye.
Aye.
S. Aye.
So I'll save it.